I just thought that may I saw somebody go down there who was lost.
He was tied to the woodstock. Yeah, good. I'll wait till you get back.
You're in the old book?
Did you find it? One minute left.
So who sits over there? Nobody?
Usually they talk to you.
Oh, should I move the microphone? Share about it. Do you have John the microphone?
Um...
Why don't I?
It doesn't seem like she's coming. She would have been here by now.
John gets a mic. Once you're done, it's time. It's time when you guys are ready. It's time when you guys are ready.
I don't believe it's there on it.
It's there also.
No.
All right, if everybody could please quiet down, we'll start. Please rise for the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation under our indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Chase, Wednesday, July thirteenth.
Please stop.
I don't think I did that.
I'm not gonna hear you if you keep pulling it.
Bad mic. Just wanna slide that one down a little bit. Okay, this is the public hearing for the Phoenisha Festival of the Voice application. You would like to begin with attendance, please?
Clifford Bufo.
Here.
Art Christie.
Here.
Joanne Kao.
Here.
John Horn.
Here.
Alan Shiner. Sam Spada.
Here.
Vivian Welton.
You got time to read the notifications, please?
Notice is hereby given that the Town of Shandaken Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 274 and/or 276 of state law and as prescribed by the district's schedule of area and bulk regulations of the Shandaken Town Code for the purpose of hearing the following applicant: Regarding a site plan review, change of use application submitted by Adam Turba on behalf of Phoenisha Festival of the Voice Foundation for a parcel located at 22-24 Route 214 Phoenisha, New York 12464, indicated as SBL number 13.16-3-32, located in a hamlet commercial zone. Phoenisha Festival of the Voice has submitted this application in order to change the use to a cultural facility with accessory offices and community space. The public hearing is scheduled for July 13th, 2022 at 6:45 at the Shandaken Town Hall, 7209 Route 28, Shandaken, New York 12480. Anyone who wishes to make comment in regards to this application may do so during the public hearing. If you are unable to attend, you may send any comments you would like read during the meeting to shandakenbldg@gmail.com or PO Box 134, Shandaken, New York 12480.
Okay, if we could have a representative come up and go over the project, please, for the benefit of the public?
Good evening, I'm Adam Turba, the architect for the Festival of the Voice. Basically, what we've asked to do is change the use from the existing house of worship that's there to a cultural center and maintaining a very small occupancy in the space and having accessory use for the offices for the Festival of the Voice to pretty much use the space the way they have been using it along with the church for the past 12 or 13 years as a rehearsal space with some small amount of performances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce, you said you received some comments?
Yes, we received some letters. What we did, we have five. Mostly, we have from Aaron Di Piazza. We have from Nathan Dershowitz. I'm gonna just read some highlights of these, if that's okay? All the board members received these emails before 3:00 PM, as required. So they've all had time to read them over, so I'm gonna just give a short synopsis for the audience of the gist of them. So we have Aaron Di Piazza. Can't attend tonight's meeting at Town Hall. Support of the Phoenisha International Festival of the Voice. Have been privileged to collaborate with Maria Todaro, members of the festival for three years, as Assistant Director of Videography Department. Freelance musician, experienced working in New York City with Metropolitan Opera Jazz, Lincoln Center, and Carnegie Hall. The quality of work and artistry that the festival brings to Phoenisha is world-class. As a resident of the Catskills, it brings me so much joy and pride that our beautiful region has such a thriving arts community and a wonderful, diverse, and appreciative spirit. I hope that the Phoenisha International Festival Voice can continue its mission of arts education, allowing local and international artists a chance to hone their craft and providing a public venue to use the festival's resources for the betterment of our community. I'd like to chat further. Call me when I can. Nathan Dershowitz. I have long supported the Phoenisha Library in part because I believe that community centers are an important and useful addition to especially small towns. For this reason, I also support the effort of the festival to use this church as a community center. Tammy Shaw from the Phoenisha Supermarket. We at the Phoenisha Supermarket fully support and welcome the Festival of Voice. We feel it adds attraction to our town as well as business to our local stores. I believe they are asset to our small town and hope that they will be able to have smaller-scale events as well during the rest of the year. Tammy Shaw. The Emerson. Support strongly and ask you to unanimously approve the issue of certificate of occupancy to the... Is that what it is?
Special.
Whatever. Festival of Voice for headquarters of former Wesleyan Church. Their strong passion and mission to serve the economic driver for our community and to share our beautiful corner of the Catskills. Founders Louis Yote, Justin, and Barbara Carl, but as course of wonderful Maria Todaro, who have provided world-class entertainment, education, internships, and apprenticeships and opportunities for non-professional local singers of all ages to bestow the power and joy of music and the human voice. Marge and Joe Tiso. They... The Festival of Voice has been a source of help and inspiration involving themselves in many community and church activities over the years. They have always been eager to overcome, involve, and lend a hand to improve and support many projects. Their presence is an asset to our town. We have personally been involved as a liaison between the church facilities, grounds, and buildings with FOV for several years and found them very accommodating to our wishes and desires for the care and the upkeep of all areas. We're almost down, folks. Jolie Dunham. Would like to speak on behalf of the Festival of the Voice. Over the years, I have lived and performed throughout the country and one of the most prestigious and coveted orchestras in major concert halls, Lincoln Center, County Center, and all those places. In fact, it was this knowledge that led me back to my hometown of Kingston. The festival has done an amazing job and has given a healing and artistic presence to the small hamlet of Phoenisha during the summer months and throughout the year with community singing during the holidays and other events. Please support the treasure that has put the culture and financial well-being of our town on the map. Jolie Dunham. Bonnie Rosen. I want to express my deep gratitude and love for Maria Todaro and the festival. I know others had similar experiences. I hope Maria and the festival are able to continue their incredible work and expand as they grow in their new home is one way for this to happen. Phoenisha Diner. The Festival of Voice is one of the many reasons people from all over the world visit Phoenisha every year. The FOV is the premier cultural institution in the region, and by awarding them this change of use, they can set down physical roots in the town that they have been so widely associated with. Our business depends on attractions like the FOV to draw in tourism each year, and by allowing this change, we can count on the institution to flourish and add another jewel to our hamlet. We feel confident that this success of the FOV as a destination-worthy cultural center will help bolster the reputation of the region, increase tourism, create jobs, and inspire continued economic growth in all our community businesses along Main Street and the surrounding hamlets. Julie Rose. I believe that the events and classes of the Festival of Voice plans to hold near space will be a huge plus for our residents, community, and visitors. Their plans will help us continue to grow in the best little town that could. It would be a huge loss for many members of our community if these things could not continue. Leah Kelp. Kelp, I'm sorry, I get those two always confused. Although I am supporter of the arts and an artist myself, this site is not a good location for this type of venue proposed. The site simply does not have enough parking spaces to support the size of concert events that they would like to have held. J Street is a quiet residential road that is already narrow as it is. If the proposed plan goes through, parking will be pushed into existing residents' lawns and will congest the neighborhood. Existing residents will also have to deal with the noise and lack of privacy this proposed site would inflict. We would like to keep this small area what it is, quiet residential area away from the traffic, noise, and tourists that already happen in downtown Phoenisha. As someone who has grown up in Phoenisha their whole life, I've watched this town become busier and seen heavier traffic that hits the town every summer season. I would like to keep our quiet area quiet and removed from downtown. The Festival of the Voice mission is about performances, and their site plan talks a lot about performances. But are they asking for a change of use to a cultural facility, which is like a museum or a library, and is not intended to be used as a concert hall as appears they also wish to use it? I ask the FOV strictly be limited to the planning board to specific number of performances per year. My name is Molly Kelp, and I live across the street from 24 Main Street. Please read this letter to the planning board in the public hearing. I am writing to voice my concerns, the proposed variance for 24 Main Street. I welcome arts in Phoenisha, however, the area which the venue is proposed is a quiet residential neighborhood and lacks space for parking for even small events. I live directly across from the site on J Street and fear that the integrity of our quiet neighborhood would be uprooted by traffic and noise. Last letter. This is from John Kelp. I am all for the arts and being an artist myself sympathize with how difficult it is to support such talents. In past summers, living directly across the street from the church where rehearsals were held, I found it endearing, especially hearing Maria yell at the choir that it was an F-sharp, not a B-flat. You like that? A little drama? We like the idea of small classes, art exhibits, and the farmer's market to benefit the community. Now with the festival ownership of the church, it raises the questions of rehearsals versus performances, large groups of people, parking, and nocturnal performances. I thought the compromise initial proposal between us residents and Maria and Louis of a small number of performances a year was both generous on our part and equitable for all sides concerned. I was frankly quite disturbed to hear now that this proposal ended up in a lawyer's hands by the festival instead of all worked out together. My feelings now are that I neither want to answer to or possibly be dictated by any goddamn lawyer about how I should live in the dwelling that lived happily for the past 20 years. I feel that the neighbors' good faith negotiations are now traversed, and therefore I have no question this whole proposal... I have to question this whole proposal entirely. I ask the planning board to get in writing the number of performances per year and also the hours of operation, parking, and so on. Please help us keep the peace of our small neighborhood. The end.
We'll now take comments from the public if you put your name down on the sheet. I ask that you please keep your time down so everyone has a chance to speak. And if something you'd like to say has already been said by somebody else, please just reiterate it and keep it short so we can all get home to our families and everyone has a chance.
First name? And folks, please just direct your comments all to the board, and do not speak with the audience. And the audience is not to speak when somebody else is speaking, please. Becca Frank? You get right up to it. It's a little bad. Yeah. Can we have your name and where you live?
Yes, my name's Becca Frank, and I live on 25 Church Street. And I'm here to urge the board to get everything in writing from Maria and Louis. So, "To the Shandaken Planning Board, I found Maria and Louis to not be trustworthy in terms of their commitments. Here are some reasons why. I loaned them 20 grand in 2008, which was my inheritance money from my grandmother, for the purpose of purchasing a property on 6 Evergreen Drive to use for an artist retreat and classes. At the time, Maria lied to me about their arrangement with 4 Evergreen Drive, and Louis stated in writing, 'We are now about lease optioning to another larger Victorian house with three years in which to obtain a mortgage, and we take possession August 1st.' The original terms of my agreement with them was repayment of the principal in full with 10% interest in 12 months. They stopped repayment and currently owe me the principal of 20 grand and now over $25,000 in interest. Without me knowing, they sold 6 Evergreen Drive and based on records at the time appeared to have received 40 grand but did not pay me back. I approached them many times over the years, and they continually claimed poverty, mentioning, for example, in 2015, 'Our finances are low, our debts are huge, we are on the verge of bankruptcy, we lost every single asset we possess to live, and we still depend on the generosity of artists and volunteers. They have to this day refused to pay me back the money they owe. The terms of my loan included the house as collateral, but they sold it while I was out of town and did not inform me of the sale. I was unable to put a lien on the property once the title was under another name. In other words, they found a loophole. I was a community member and a volunteer who spent years volunteering for them, and this situation caused me great distress, including years of nightmares and avoiding some community events. I am aware of a number of other community members whose interest in contributing to the town was taken advantage of by Maria and Louis. For the protection of our town and its residents, I urge you to document all transactions and agreements with them in writing and make a plan for enforcement. Thank you."
Takan Buker?
We welcome cultural activities in the community.
Can you tell us where you live?
I live at 10 J Street. I'm directly next door. But we have concerns about the festival application. We do not feel they are being transparent about what they want to do with the space. We ask that the planning board require detailed conditions in writing for approval, the most critical being the limit of performances per year and clear parking rules. We are the immediate neighbors. Our homes were purchased 20 years ago to raise our families in this quiet neighborhood. Our homes are all we really have. No one wants to live next to a concert venue. We want to preserve the fundamental peaceful character of this residential neighborhood as well as the value of our homes. At the June Planning Board meeting, we, like the planning board, were pleased to see the festival was moving to define the property as a cultural facility instead of a specially-used performance venue. However, we believe the festival intends to go in the back door to continue to be primarily an unpermitted performance venue, just under a different name. The application, as now presented, appears to seek the right to have an unlimited number of performances either sponsored by the festival or by tenants or guests. Our concern has been and continues to be the impact of these performances on the neighborhood due to parking, activity, noise, and traffic. There are four reasons we feel that the festival is intending to use this as a performance space. Number one, the site plan itself states performances are a main use, leading us to believe that this is still the primary focus of the festival no matter what they call the property. Number two, if you look at the festival webpage, and I'm gonna give you copies of that. That's our board members. The property is called 24 Main Performance Arts Center, with music, concerts, theater, lecture, workshops, performing arts center. There is no mention of a cultural facility with accessory offices and community space which they're applying for. The festival has been unwilling to clearly state how they will use the space when we met with them in good faith. However, to maintain positive relations, we reached out on behalf of our neighbors to request that they write into their site plan a good compromise for performances per year. Then, after weeks of promises, they refused to define the number of performances in their site plan and instead wanted us to give us a contract from their lawyer. We told them that we felt that the use of the property is a matter for the planning board, and a lawyer's letter was not enforceable. They said they preferred a lawyer's letter because they didn't want to jeopardize future resale value of the property. In a meeting with Maria in June, she told us that she had given a key to a local musician this past winter while she was away and invited him to do weekly concerts. This is exactly the kind of thing that we're worried about. We ask that three conditions be written into the site plan by the planning board. Number one, allowed use. A cultural facility is defined in the New York State Uniform Building Code as an establishment used for the purposes of preserving, exhibiting, demonstrating, or interpreting art, history, culture, or nature, or scientific objects or ideas. Cultural facilities shall be interpreted to include but not be limited to museums, libraries, zoos, art galleries, aquariums, planetariums, botanical gardens, and nature centers. Other cultural facilities in town, such as the Shandaken Museum and Libraries, typically host public performances zero to three times a year. We and the neighbors ask that the planning board tell the festival in writing how many performances are allowed and stick with a range that is customary for a cultural facility. After talking to the immediate neighbors, we feel that five per year is a fair amount, and if things go well, they can come back to the planning board. We ask that the site plan be extremely specific about all the planned uses to prevent the festival from taking advantage. We hope that the space benefits the community hosting such as for small classes for children and adults and partnering with schools. Number two, operating hours. We ask that the festival respect the Town Code provisions and end at 9:00 PM sharp. Parking. We understand there's an agreement is in place with the Catholic Church for parking during large events of 49 people. We ask that the planning board require more detail for the gatherings that are smaller. Because of the narrowness of the street, once you hit street parking of five or more cars, the street can become undrivable. Please add to the parking plan stating where to park with a small class, let's say between 10 and 30 people. Not just when they're 49. We feel that these written conditions are necessary based on the not-good faith behavior of the Festival of the Voice in the past. The festival has already had a record of zoning noncompliance at the property. At the planning board meeting on March 30th, the planning board said that the festival has already had legal use for the past year and ignored a citation from the town for unpermitted use. This is very concerning. They have not addressed trespassing on our property by pedestrians and vehicles. Vehicles, I'll tell you. Saying they do not have the money to build a fence. There is a pattern of not honoring commitments. And this is the stuff that Becca Frank brought up a few minutes ago. This history speaks of the necessity of requiring Maria and the festival to have strict conditions for use. The designation of a cultural facility is approved without limitations as to the type and number of performances. We respectfully assert that the board would violate the terms of our own zoning code. The festival can call it what it wants, but if it is hosting performances, it is also a performance venue no matter what else it does. As we said, no one wants to wake up and find themselves living next to a concert venue. We are still optimistic that with detailed conditions for approval in writing, the festival and its neighbors can peacefully coexist. We welcome all of the festival's ideas for classes for young and old and for such thing as the winter's farmer's market that work well in a quiet neighborhood. Thank you.
Catherine Haber, 12 J Street?
Hi, I'm Catherine Haber, and I live at 12 J Street. Can you... Oh, okay. Catherine Haber, 12 J Street. I guess at this point, just for everyone's time sake, I would say I do support what my neighbors are saying. I share their concerns, but I guess I do it with a slightly different tone. I hope it succeeds. I hope it's a success. I do welcome this venture in our community. I would look forward to taking my son to concerts down the street. But I do agree that there seems to be a track record, and so having things spelled out in writing seems like, you know, the prudent thing to do. Thank you.
Lorenzo Vesely, 11 J Street?
Hello, my name is Lorenzo Vesely, 11 J Street. I live diagonally from the site. I have attended the concert and enjoyed it and loved the music and loved the idea of having the festival and a place of culture in our community, but I do support concerns about the use and the lateness of concerts and the number of concerts. So I welcome them, and I hope that they are good neighbors to us, and we want to be good neighbors to them. And that's what I have to say.
Ken Booth, representing 23 Main Street?
Hello, my name is Ken Booth. I live here in Shandaken, but I'm representing my father-in-law, who has lived across the street at 23 Main Street for close to 100 years now. And just speaking on behalf of the Festival of the Voice, we think it'd be a great use for the building. It was sad to see, as the church declined in membership, the disrepair of the building suffered, and it's nice to see that they've been working on rehabbing it and making it back to what it used to be. And we're supportive of the efforts there. That's all.
That's it? Is there anybody else who would want to speak? Yes. You can. Yes, you may. Just state your name and where you live.
My name's Linda Dunn. I live in Pine Hill on Upper Birch Creek Road, and I've been there full-time, winter and summer, for, well, 12, 13 years. We've owned the house since 91. I don't live right in Phoenicia, but I've been involved with the Phoenicia Festival of the Voice since it started. And in fact, in the early days, when it was still a church, I was within the choir, we first owned that space, many times. And I know that, in my experience at least, working with the festival, with Maria, there's been a willingness to work with the neighbors and to try to avoid confrontations and problems that are being feared here. The festival has been here in Phoenicia for 12 years now, so it's not an unknown entity. You all have probably been to many of the concerts and some of you have probably participated in singing in the chorus and in other events. I hope that an understanding can be reached with the festival and the church. I think there is a willingness on the festival side to do so and as I said, there is a track record here. The festival has brought a lot of attention and a lot of music to the area and to Phoenicia as a whole. Thanks.
Is there anyone else that didn't get a chance to sign up? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Tom Fraser. I'm a business owner here in Phoenicia for the last 30 years that we've lived here. And I just want to bring a sort of a business perspective to this. I understand, you know, the residents' concerns, but one of the great things about the business community in the area, not just Phoenicia, but the area, is that it's a very complementary symbiotic relationship. The cultural, the recreational businesses bring in people that might not come to Phoenicia for any other reason. Therefore, our lodging, our restaurants, and our shops benefit from that. It's a vice versa thing in that our lodging, our shopping, and our restaurants provide those visitors with something intrinsic in Phoenicia to spend the time while they're here. So I'm all in favor of this Festival of the Voice coming to Phoenicia. If you'd told me when I moved here 30 years ago that there was going to be a festival in the park like there has been for the last 12 or so years, I would have said you're crazy. Because who would have thought? The festival has not put Phoenicia necessarily on the map, but I think it's been a very positive thing for the whole community. There can't be any better advocate for the festival and for the community than Maria. I mean, she's a dynamo in what she's achieved. Now to find out that they have a concrete base to actually have a base here in Phoenicia, I think is a wonderful thing. It's a balancing act, I understand, but from a business point of view, I think it's a great thing and I'm all in favor. Thank you.
Any additional people wish to speak?
My name is David Congdon. I live at 18 Muddy Brook Road in Woodland Valley. I've had the opportunity to volunteer for the Festival of the Voice, both at Parish Field and for the two events they had in Wesleyan Church in December. Also, I volunteer for, with Flying Cat Music at the concerts they have at the United Methodist Church on Church Street, which we're starting up concerts again this summer. So I, it puts me in a position of being aware just from observation that there are, while there are problems, challenges that need to be addressed when it comes to traffic, to parking, and to noise, and just general quality of life, that these are challenges that can be met. And I think the positive, the positive aspect of having the, all of these cultural attractions in Phoenicia are, they pay dividends years down the line. We had a concert at the United Methodist Church Saturday night. Half the people who were there were people who were visiting and staying either at the Phoenicia Bell or an Airbnb. They will go away and remember these concerts for the rest of their lives. And I think that's, those kinds of experiences can pay lots of dividends for many years. Thank you.
There are no further comments? I'm going to move this forward then to the public hearing. Again, a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
They want a roll call.
Cliff Rabusso?
Yes.
Art Christie? Joanne Cal?
Yes.
John Horn?
Yeah.
Alan Shiner? Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
Are we going to have a chance to ask questions to the audience after this?
Yes.
Yes?
Okay, this begins the regular monthly meeting. Can you just do a minute again, Olivia, please?
Cliff Rabusso?
Here.
Art Christie?
Here.
Joanne Cal?
Here.
John Horn?
Here.
Alan Shiner? Sam Spada?
Here.
Vivian Welton?
Present.
All right. Do you ever have a chance to look over the minutes from the previous meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Any comments for Olivia? Okay, take a motion to approve the minutes as written. So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and right back to old business, which is first thing is Festival of the Voice. Got it, Art?
Okay. I just want to take a moment to try to address some of the questions on both sides of the fence here. Three of the concerns were about how many performances are going to be done in a year. Could you please give me an answer on that?
We have, when we spoke actually two weeks ago with our neighbors, we heard the concerns about the multitude of, can you hear me?
I cannot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to...
Do you want to use the microphone?
Yeah.
Home area of live feed also.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, yes, we heard the concern about our neighbors. I mean, for us, that would be unlimited, but the reality is with 49 people in our church, it's hard to organize concert, concert and costly, they are, you know, so it would have been a limited amount and also I traveled, the reality of the fact that we volunteers. I would have said, what I've had said to our neighbors originally two weeks ago when we met with Mike Chaffey from the Phoenicia Diner is that we would love to do three per month. That would have been, you know, small, intimate. But then we saw the reaction, there was too much, way too much for, this is not at all what the neighbors had in mind, and the number 10 had been proposed to us. And we had, at the time, two weeks ago, we agreed that we could totally, it's less than once a month, we could totally agree to 10 public performances a year. The, because it was a concern, so we tried to be, this was a good neighbor. For us, it's not, I don't, you know, this is telling a baker how many croissants he has to bake every morning. For us, we live with this performance, this is how we express ourselves, so it's limiting our mission, but we understand the concern of the people, the amount. And we're scary because when we do the festival in the summer at the park, we do have a lot of people coming, so it is scary. I understand the fear of having a lot of people stepping all over the place. We did have incidents of a truck for exactly six minutes. It was a volunteer, unfortunately, drove in the property of our neighbors. That was at the beginning, when we went there, we didn't explain very well the boundaries. We're learning and we understand, you know, we now know how to tell our people, don't cross those limits, don't park here, don't go there. We're learning. To answer precisely your question, I think that with our neighbors, in the letter that they said we draft with a lawyer, we have someone that doesn't make us look like idiots when we drive, when we write documents, so we do have pro bono lawyers working with us. And we set an agreement that we absolutely are happy to disclose and we are happy to sign anything that is asked of us to sign. This is why we brought this argument, this thing here. And so it was 10 performances. And so 10 performances a year, we could function. We could continue to do our classes, we could function. We had, in the past 13 years, we have had an office on Main Street. We didn't have any church to do events, you know, we had an office. And this is what we need to really be a summer festival, but this was a plus. Having a little space was a plus for us and we got creative and we thought we could expand, we could, you know, do our educational program, we could do our lectures, we could invite people to exhibit. So this is the ambition of the place, 10 performances. If it's the number that is imposed, this is reassuring to our neighbors. We're very happy to do this. As a matter of, may I expand? Because in that agreement, we have also addressed the question of the time and we, you know, 10:00 PM sound to be a nice and fair compromise that was accepted by our neighbors. They said 10:00 PM is acceptable. We even went further and say, you know, public will leave at 10, but we might have to clean, is it okay? And that was accepted also. So audience gone at 10. As of the parking, you know very well that we have an agreement already that we intend to reinforce as much as we can. There will be a learning curve for sure because we can't control always, you know, where people, we don't have the force to say, people park here, park here, but we will advertise it, we can commit to advertise, don't park here, park everywhere else at the Catholic Church, we're not here. As a matter of fact, we were scolded early on because we built it some signage that we tried, we're protecting J Street, but we ended up learning that this signage is illegal. We can't put signage. So we will learn also what kind of signage we can put, what kind of, but the parking is addressed. 10:00 PM is when we plan for our public event to stop. And also, you know, our public event at 49 people that in the church, that means also the... And regardless, I want also to disclose that maybe, maybe we will restore one day if we get grants the glory of that church, which is a 220, you know, capacity. We discussed this, we have vision, we have dreams, of course we do. I wanted to reassure also our neighbors to say that we do not intend to pervert the integrity of the structure, the building. We fell in love with this place. I also want to share that I lived here for 15 years. This is my home too. This is the home that I have my house on High Street. I commerced with my community. I love this place, from all the places in the world. I'm French, as you know, from all the places in the world I could have lived and chosen. I have chosen Phoenicia because I love it. I don't want to pervert it. I was telling Catherine Haber the other day, I share your concern because I too don't want to have a full tithe of people. But we are not an unknown entity. For 13 years we served and I have been here for 15 years. So it's not like, you know, you got people coming from I don't know where and decide to put the donkey down outside the corner of the street. This is us. For whatever perspective or opinion you can have about my failure or who I am as a person, we have a board. I don't make the decision for the festival, obviously. We have more members, and Mike Chaffey is a board member and I never presented myself alone with the neighbors. I was always with the board, unless you meet a neighbor in the street and you ask for support, of course I did. So 10 performances, 10:00 PM, and parking is addressed. We will grow, we asked our neighbor, hey, if you see that everything is going okay and we want an 11 performance, can we come to you and ask permission? We said we would ask permission to the neighbor and I understood that this conversation wasn't Mike Chaffey, who's not here unfortunately, and was saying, yeah, you can come and we'll see. Our intent is to prove over time that we are good neighbors. Our intent is to abide by those rules and show that we are not threatening. And also, I would like to insist on the fact that this is not new. We have been using that church for 13 years. I created my choir there, I did caroling and concert where there was no regulation because there might have been 350 something people in that church where you can only put 200 apologies, I did not know. You know, we pushed everybody that we could possibly put in that church, we did. We had symphonic orchestra in that church, we had so many, we have kids performing for the first time in that church. And we have done this every year before COVID. And we, you know, we did the caroling in the street and then we had Messiah at the church and some of you, but we passed those things. So it's not exactly a new, we don't just knew. And by the way, completely under not knowing what we were really doing, yes, we've been there for a year already. We've been repairing stuff, we've been trying to understand the dance with the town, we've been trying to understand, you know, the codes, what we have to do to be accepted. So we've been there, it's not that, and I, besides the farmer's market, which was a what? Because that too, we didn't know, we didn't know what to do, but obviously the farmer's market was a good thing. We did not ask for money and that can be verified. You know, we did not ask, they came there and I was their residence for the winter and the community benefited. We had a, we had people already, we've been there for, we've been there for a year already. And I don't think we have been so, I hope we have not been so, besides the few incidents of the truck for six minutes on the grass and, you know, maybe, I would not want to believe that we have been so disturbing already, you know.
Maria, I can see the concern about the public though, because you did that illegally.
Well, yeah.
We told you no and you went right ahead and didn't. So I can understand their questioning what's going on here. Well... I have a question.
Sure.
If you want to have these concerts, I want to know, you know, your capacity is only 49 people and that includes the performance.
That's right.
So what kind of lawyers do you think you're going to be having?
Exactly, exactly. We can't, the performances that we were dreaming of doing, I think are very limited because of our capacity to make the work that we need to make to do concerts. So right now, until we can make the second egress and maybe restore the 220, they will be limited. And there is mini lecture that you can do, there's readings that you can do, but it's not performance, you know, when you only have 30 people and they are certainly not a source of income for us. So we have to find other ways, but it would be limited. It would be very limited, you're right. As for the illegal aspect, this is the first time we own anything. This is the first time, you know, we understand, we, because we have been operating in this place, it was, because we've been operating in that church for so long, we had habits in there. By the way, the Wesleyan Church is holding the note for us to tell you that we are, you know, this is our home. We've been there for a really long time already. So what you're talking about is maybe habits of use that we had and we had to adjust to them. So now we are happy to learn and we're happy to adjust to them and this is, you know, as simple as that outside. Any questions?
I'd like to address some of the questions that the public had, if you don't mind.
Oh, you may, you want me here?
They've asked, what projects have you supported in financial wellbeing of the community? Have you given donations to any of the organizations? Do you pay the church for the parking as a contribution to the Catholic Church?
We have, so, sorry.
Could you please speak a little louder, Maria?
Of course, it's the mask, I apologize for the mask.
I'm a little deaf.
No, no, and I have the mask because I have had some people around me that, you know, so I don't want to. But, so the contribution, my goodness, where to start? Probably the fact that I have not been, just at the base of the festival, just at the base of the festival, I could go on and on, but this is very much a volunteer-based operation and I hope that there's been dovetailing for the benefit of the whole community. Even if we didn't put money into certain things, we certainly put sweat equity in our time. And I have been, you know, this is maybe the second year that I'm receiving a salary of $2,000 a month, but for the other 11 years, I have not been paid. So, and I work, I don't know, for the people that work with me, that can witness that I work, I work, I just work all the time. I work, I work, I just work all the time. And, you know, if you pass, so, let's say that I do twelve hours a day, at even, you know, $2,000 a month, you make the math, and you tell me what I make. So this is my contribution, my personal contribution. On the contribution of the, to the community, well, ten years ago, Michael Cogga and I, we relaunched a business association, matter of fact, I still own the Facebook, you know, account of it. It's just a relaunching, and now it's blooming by itself, but there's people here in the room that can attest. What did we do? We didn't give money, but we gave our time, because you know.
So we're saying unlimited sweat labor here.
Unlimited sweat labor, not just from me, from my people, also from my volunteer that I motivate to give, because that's what we do. We want to be everywhere you see, that we want to be relevant, we want to be an art organization that is pragmatic. There is, there is a lot of things that we want to do that, you know, if, if we can do them, if we are not limited.
That certainly has value.
I hope so.
I just want to, I'm trying to get the questions answered that the public asked.
And they're fair question. The monetary exchange that we have with the Catholic Church, and we have two representatives of the Catholic Church, so I can be, you know, put in tart and feather if you want, whatever. But the thing is that we don't have the money, and if you don't believe us, you know, if there is a doubt about an art organization, a non-for profit after COVID or nowadays, it's very easy, we are nine ninety, so everybody can check our account. We don't have, we don't have it, we raise it, we beg for it all the time. And we beg with joy, because we know that we transform lives, so we do it. But, so when I said I don't have money for the fence, we will make all effort possible to actually, oh, that was another thing in the agreement, the neighbors want the fence, we will make the fence, we'll make sure, but it's going to take a little time, or maybe we can share the expenses, or maybe we can raise the money, and eventually we'll have a fence, or maybe we just put a fence there, and then when we have more money, we'll make a better fence, I don't know. But that's, that's also agreed, that we want to do that, like this, there will be no confusion.
Now it certainly answers the question about them parking on their property.
Absolutely. So that will be a solution for sure, and we will do it. The Catholic Church, we will do a fundraiser for them, in exchange of the parking. Meaning, we don't pay money, but we will find artists that do usually get a lot of money to do what they do, and I've done it with the Klein Art and Woodstock, and I did it for a lot of educational and cultural organization here, we did it for the Green, you know, Fall Green Rock Academy, we did, we did it for other people.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
I'm wondering if any of the old timers in the room, because it seems to me, when it was a church, there were performances every Sunday. And I know, maybe there wasn't a very large congregation, but where did they all park, talking to the neighbors?
It was, Carol, it was a very small congregation, this is in the last twenty years, and honestly, it was probably about two just three parks, and so there really was no problem. And it was, the youth was every Sunday, ten o'clock, you know, till eleven, and it was obviously no impact.
One of the other interesting things that took place for me tonight was Mr. Condon. When you said that you just did a country band on Church Street. You think that we're going to have this continue around town and different places? That was an eye-opener to me, which is one of the things we're trying to avoid.
I'm sorry, were you asking me a question?
Yes, come closer, sir, because I'm deaf too.
We should ban masks.
Yes, you said that you just had a country band on Church Street.
Not a country band, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's.
No, there's a, there's, there's a couple in Phoenicia, Tommy Ronaldo and Janet Kugievich, who have been producing Americana folk concerts, folk music concerts in Phoenicia, I guess now for twelve years, at Art at the Upstairs initially, and then at the Empire State Railway Museum, and then in 2019, and this year, at the United Methodist Church at the corner of Church and Tremper Street in Phoenicia.
Was that the Festival of the Voice?
No, it's not, no, it's a different enterprise.
No, it's Flying Cat Music.
Flying Cat Music is the name of the group.
I'm not sure you're saying so, but no, it wasn't me.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to see.
Where do I pop?
There's a. What we're trying to avoid is having this all over the town.
Well, so, so, just to answer your question, I think part of your question was, how many or what was the scope of these concerts? Typically, about ten a year, starting in, well, depending on the, on the year, they would start in April, or this year, we started in July, we got a late start, and ending in November. But once, about once every three weeks, for the summer and fall season.
Is there a charge?
Yes.
But this is not the Festival of the Voice.
No, no.
No.
Thank you.
Sure.
How many people attend?
How many people attend that?
I would say, just historically on average, I started volunteering in 2015 with them, and less than fifty per concert, I would say, is the typical average size. Small. And we survive by paying the eighty percent of the box office to the artist and twenty percent to the, as a use fee for the space, so we break even.
Okay.
Thank you.
What time does it end usually?
Nine-thirty typically, I would say, seven-thirty to nine-thirty, maybe nine-forty-five.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that I see that's going to have to change is this.
You know why it's there, right? It's because he gave us some Google tracking, that's all, that's the only reason.
Well, it still misleads people, Maria.
Okay, I'll tell my guy that does that.
Yeah, just a few items. So the first is that the Festival of the Voice has been very responsive, they've been coming here for a few months now, in discussions with us. You know, we've asked for things to be changed, and they've been responsive, they've done that, so you can just take enough that they have been working with the commentary that this board has been providing to them. I think that's in their favor. Remind me if my memory's wrong here, but as far as the parking's concerned, I think we even saw the letter from the church. So there was a good deal of transparency there, we did see that letter from the church, that could be caught, that's certainly part of our record. With regard to nomenclature and cultural facility, it's always been understood, at least by me, and I think by the rest of this board, that the culture here is about performing arts. That's never been a hidden thing, this has been totally transparent from the start, that this is a performance center, and that's the type of culture that they're intending to do there. So that is not news to this board. And with regard to performance numbers, you know, I'm personally not in favor of restricting any organization of business in terms of how they go about it, but if we have to agree on a number of performances, I would strongly say we should agree on the number of performance days. I would hate to see a day with five performances count for half of their year.
Well, I think they were talking about performance days. I just.
If we're going to get specific, I think we want to be very clear.
We're always going to keep track of how many performances there are.
I'm not in favor that we put a restriction, but that's just my feeling.
Well.
Because I don't want, as a board, I don't think I want to be their partner in terms of what it takes to run a cultural organization.
But you also have to realize, the community character is being affected by it.
Yeah, we have to look at this from all sides.
And that's a number-one thing for us.
I understand. I also see it as a cultural facility that is replacing a cultural facility.
No, I don't, I don't see that at all.
Well, this is a cause for.
They were there an hour, one day a week, for an hour.
And it's a church.
And it was a church.
A church is not a cultural facility.
Go ahead, yes. In regards to that, that it was a church, and that's true, and they had their services on Sunday, and possibly some other things during the week, they also shared the space with the Festival of the Voice for thirteen years, doing the exact same things that they're asking to do now. So in that sense, it does seem like maybe we don't call it, it was a cultural center, and now it's one or something like that, but the things that were going on there are the exact same things, minus the Sunday during the day, morning, you know, somebody waking you up at nine o'clock in the morning with a call to prayer or something. But, you know, that's the difference now, we're not having a church, but the kind of performances and things like that would be the same that they've been doing there, so.
The only thing is, it's detrimental to not have the right nomenclature, when you look it up in the law. You can't say a church is a cultural.
No, no, it's a community center that has performances.
We like the, we like the community slash cultural center. This is something that became very dear to us. At first, we called it a performance center, that's true, because that's all we know. But then when we start working with you, and we learn, and we, we understood that, can you hear me? We understood that, actually, there was a lot of possibility that we have not thought of, and you suggested community slash cultural center, and we now have named ourselves, we like it. It actually fits very well to our identity and who we are. We cherish, the reason we embrace the word community was because of the snafu with the farmer's market that was invited, and everybody was very confused about it. And then we realized that we embraced the word community in our title, then maybe we would have tolerance and an acceptance to have community endeavors such as a program that to use our basement or wherever, and we could enlarge actually our vision. Well, maybe, the guidance on the name gave us a purpose, in a sense, that at first, all we wanted to do is continue indeed and do the performances, and then all of a sudden, we're like, maybe it's not a bad idea to do certain smaller community-oriented things, because we won't make money, as you made the math a few minutes ago, we won't make money with forty-nine, we might with two-hundred-twenty later, but even like this, two-hundred-twenty seats is not a viable, you know, we would have to do nothing, you know, whatever, it's not, it's, it's good, but it's, it's very good for us performances, but we have to do performances all the time, which we don't have the resources to do anyway. So cultural community is good.
Maria, our responsibility, number one, is to interpret the law. Number two, it's to protect the citizens. And it seems tonight that we're, we're very close. They asked for ten performances, you said ten performances, that sounds like an agreement to me.
We were sharing the same perspective. Our original was no, you know, no limitation, but if this is what will bring peace, which is also very dear to us, then we are absolutely happy to make that conference.
Yes, and you also.
And we have it in writing.
And you also said that you would put up a fence.
Yeah.
So these, what I'm trying to do here is, I'm trying to narrow these things down, so everything is documented clearly in the special permit, so we don't have any animosity amongst neighbors, number one, and number two, that we can preserve the harmony of our town. So, and the only other thing that I have to say is that the latest you can do, you said you were going to be doing cleanups, and that would lead into ten o'clock.
Then was the agreement we have.
Understandably so.
That's not true. I'm sorry. Because I spoke to Maria.
And Michael?
Yeah. And what I said was, because I was speaking on behalf of.
Could you please come to the mic so I can hear? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Liz Potter, and I'm, I live on J Street. We did not agree, we, so I was the person that was speaking to Maria and Mike Chaffey, and we did kind of stretch, both, both, you know, they came down, we came way up, and we agreed on ten performances per year, as long as it was in writing in the site plan. We are not accepting a lawyer's thing, because that can't be enforced by the town. Also, we agreed, for some of the neighbors, ten o'clock was good, but I did say that I had to speak to the other people who live on the block, and that was not acceptable to some of the people that go to bed early, and they asked for nine o'clock, so.
Can I, I'd actually like to cut in here for a second, I want to read from a section of code. This is Section 116-23, Performance Standards for Non-Residential and Non-Agricultural Uses. A is noise. No person shall operate or cause to be operated any source of sound in such a manner as to create a sound level which exceeds the limit set forth for the receiving land use category stated below when measured at or within the property boundary of the receiving land use. I'm just saying, your neighbors. So at the property line, these are the limits. For Hamlet Commercial, which is what your, what your site is located in, it's 9:00 p.m. through 7:00 a.m., the noise limit is sixty decibels, which is roughly like a conversation. So that would be outside of the building, so it, you wouldn't be able to disturb the noise at that point. If it were louder than that, they would have grounds to, you know, file a complaint with the town, potentially lead to a violation.
So is the law saying nine?
Nine is where the noise has to, yeah, it's not saying that necessarily people can't be in there, they just can't be causing a disturbance outside of the town, outside of the building.
There's, there's no, we can't do anything else, we have to abide by the law.
It's reduced by five, if you read the next line.
Well, you told me about Hamlet Commercial.
It's in Hamlet Commercial, is that not correct?
Yes.
And I, I would like to say one more thing, if possible, actually, speaking to what Joanne said, about the character of the neighborhood. And we've lived here for twenty years, all of us, and the church was literally one hour a week. And occasionally, the festival, I would say, maybe a dozen times over ten years, had sort of a practice, you had a couple of concerts last year, maybe there was one more Christmas thing, but it was over ten years, it was tiny, it really was no, it was kind of delightful to hear. And so infrequent that it in no way altered, it is not typical what you're, you're asking of big change in the character and use of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Cliff, read the word back to the next line.
Let's, okay, Section two of that is, for any source of sound which emits a pure tone, a discrete tone or impulsive sound, the maximum sound limits set forth above shall be reduced by five decibels. I think that applies more to like a machine sound than singing.
Okay.
Now, from what she was just saying, I know that you practiced that before you had the festival, you used to practice in the church. So is that what she was talking about?
Well, we, we had the practice at least once a week with the choir, and then I gave many lessons, vocal lessons in the sanctuary itself. We had many encounters, we were actually, during the festival, we had this, during the summer, we were very active, but during the year, we had once a week at least, and you know, we had classes.
That's just not true, it's not true.
So it seems like there's a middle ground here that both sides are happy with, we're happy enough with the compromise to both sides. Site plans can be amended down the road. If you do ten concerts, and everyone says this is great, this is way less disturbance than we thought, you could potentially come back here and seek an amendment, seeking a change, provided that everybody was in fact still happy with it. So it's not that this is necessarily the end-all-be-all, you're not locked in for all of eternity.
And that works both ways. You know, for example, you can come back and say you'd like amendment to your site plan, we'd like to do this or that, fine. They can also say, there's been noise, a lot of noise disturbances, and the decibel mean is above that, and then we'd have to call you up and find out what's going on, okay? So there's no winner here, there's a neighborhood settlement, which is what I really try to do, being on the planning board. Okay? So, so I think it's very important that we read the determination in the special permit carefully before we say yes. I mean, we have to review it, we'll have to review it, you know, put it together, and then go over it. I mean, we have to review it, we'll have to review it, you know, put it together and then go over it, okay?
May I ask, the farmer's market, that's going to continue going forward?
We have stopped everything. I have not spoken with Sophie yet. We were waiting on what is happening and we wanted to ask permission to, if they want to come back, we wanted to ask. But this is not our primary mission, so that would not be a deal breaker for us. It's just, um, it would be a community, um, you know, courtesy outside to heat our space. We still have to heat it, we still have to, you know. So we would love to, we would love to, if it was a good thing.
The problem is what?
Yeah, if it's a good thing, we move them. Yeah, if it's a good thing, we move it. If it's not a good thing, it's not our primary mission.
Well, we'll get, we'll get them in, we'll do them in its collateral, if pertinent things could go to neighbors and it's not just that.
That way it'll be fair to everybody. Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, we're going to discuss this and put together a resolution and then we'll go from there. We want to make sure everything's very carefully documented, but what I've got is three concerts per year, um, no basement activities. Uh, noise ordinances are self-explanatory, uh, the parking, we already have sorted.
Very, the no basement activities.
Yes, or the no, the no farmers, but what, did you want to do in the basement?
Oh, it's just, you know, it's ancillary space upstairs, so if they're rehearsing and someone had to rehearse down there and someone had to rehearse upstairs or something like that.
We understand that it's a fourteen.
It's forty-nine.
Well, what was the limit that you wanted?
Forty-nine.
No, I was saying this clarifier earlier, that both floors would have no occupancy exceeding forty-nine feet.
Together.
Forty-nine. And Cliff, to be precise, you all insist that we say performance days, not concerts.
Yes, good idea. Thank you, folks.
That, just as a, how, uh, so is this going to take until the next meeting or approval is that, or a vote anyway?
Well, we have a workshop and we will do the limits, because in that will be everybody's comments. And then we'll see how we'll put that together.
Okay, so I, I understand and normally I wouldn't ever bring anything like this up, but the festival starts in, what, three and a half weeks? And they wanted to do some rehearsals in that sanctuary in the next few weeks?
We, we just have choir rehearsals that we would like to do, there are defined dates. Uh, if they can be a special allowance, because we've been rehearsing at the Catholic Church and this is a hospitality that they give us. But if we could put our twenty people in our own space, that would be very practical. Uh, I don't know, if it's possible. We, uh, we have a, I can, I can send the dates and I'll have them every day.
Why the, next meeting?
I don't see a problem with that.
I don't really see a problem with the rehearsing.
Just realize you're setting a precedent if something goes wrong.
I think, I think we've got a plan here, we just need to make sure we have everything.
We're looking for the verbal.
Right.
So you, you okay with us having those rehearsals? That would be probably six rehearsals.
Yes.
About, thank you.
We're not trying to close trouble for you or anybody else.
No, we'll, we'll, we'll be very careful.
Just don't exceed the time limit.
No, we'll be very careful.
Okay.
Especially before. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's get to an easy one, that's only been worked on for twenty-three years.
Yeah, please, please, everyone, so we can continue. Please. You guys? Keep going. Thank you.
I like that gathering. Is it carpeted? Make that, make that home, it's good to raise kids.
Do we have a representative from Crossroads here?
You've been waiting eighteen years.
Good evening, my name is Tom Shepherdson. I'm an attorney with White Menosha and Hannah.
Louder, louder, please.
Just a minute.
Sorry.
What happened? Ellen, we lost the sound, we can't hear him.
Sorry, Tom, you're starting to talk help.
Yeah, thank you.
Any, anyway, I can help. Um, I'm an attorney with White Menosha and Hannah here on behalf of Crossroads Ventures and the Bel Air Resort Project, requesting that the board consider granting an extension of our original approvals, uh, the site plan and special use permit. Um, approvals, you know, a number of years ago, you've, um, in the past granted, um, extended one-year extensions and we're here to ask for another extension. You know, in the, in the last year, I can report that we've obtained a speedies permit from D E C., which is valid until twenty twenty-six. We have a stream disturbance permit that's valid until twenty twenty-five. We still have not been able to make the, uh, the transaction happen with the state with regard to the Highmount Ski Center, which is really the key linchpin that's holding everything up. Uh, but we are actively, you know, um, trying with the governor's office and all the, you know, the important agencies and trying to get everybody together in a room to make, to consummate the transaction, which is, you know, easier said than done. So we're asking for additional time.
So there's been no significant changes to the site plan, it's just the permit process that takes.
Correct. No, no changes to the site plan.
Okay.
Need a motion for.
I make a motion to renew the, uh, permit for the Bel Air Resort Project for another year.
So, second. Yeah.
Our Kristy?
Yes.
Joanne Cowan?
Yes.
John Horne?
Yes.
Alan Shiner? Sam Spada?
Yes.
Vivian Welton?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Come on. Okay, um, next up is Wendy Grossman. Wendy here?
Hi, that's a hard act to follow.
Please don't try.
Um, I'm Wendy and we all spoke a couple of weeks ago. I am, uh, applying to repurpose my work shed space cabin into a small tiny house Airbnb. And that's why I'm here today.
Oh, this was the one that was less than four hundred square feet?
Yes.
That we had asked for.
Yes, yes.
Well, I missed the last rule, so.
But you sent us all the information.
No, no, Alan Shiner did.
Oh, Alan Shiner sent us.
The section Q or.
Yeah, that was very, very.
It was article Q or something, something like that.
Um, I just refresh my memory on the size of this space.
Uh, fourteen by fourteen. So it's a little bit, little bit less than two hundred square feet. Uh, just enough for like a person or a couple. Very tiny, but it's, you know, something that like, somebody who didn't want to like go to like a huge house and just wanted to be comfortable in nature could enjoy.
It has to be a livable space.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
So is it, does it have septic? Is there water?
The septic would be, um, the gray water from my shower would be connected to my home. And then I have a compostable toilet. I have one of those, um, binny water contraptions, uh, with hot and cold spigots. Um, so there's potable water and then the gray water is taken care of. And then there's a compost toilet, um, and a nice bed. Maybe a little microwave and a fridge. I mean, it's very modest, but I have worked it all out, that it's just doable. Um, it would help me greatly to offset the recession, to have just a little bit more income from my property for a cabin that's sat there not being used for many years. But it's insulated, it came with electricity, it's set up for cable, because I've used it year after year for twenty years for my work. So it was really just a change of use rather than like a new venture.
But I think we, we were confused whether with an Airbnb, which would.
There's definitely one.
Well, I don't know how to really define it. It's not going to be like some fancy Airbnb.
It's a, it's a short-term rental for sure.
Exactly, exactly.
It's not lamping like you said last time.
Obviously not going to fall into that tent category, but it's, I'm sorry.
I don't know, you guys know anything about composting toilets?
Yes, I just found out last week, you can use them.
Can you, but can you use them, um, I thought you could only have that.
My understanding here is that cell composting toilets are allowable unless there's no other gray water discharge. I don't know if that means from the structure or from any structure on the parcel. That I would not know.
The gray water from the shower, which is going to be an on-demand heater, it's going to be a hose from my house, from the spigot to the cabin. We'll go back to my septic system.
I need, I need to see some sort of documentation to show that this is.
A hose? You would have to have.
Elaborate, can you elaborate?
I don't know that. I don't believe in that.
I don't, yeah. I don't have the answer, I don't know the answer. I, we can't just say like, I can't just give you our list.
I mean, I, I know buildings that have composting toilets where the gray water is extracted, you know, extracted. There are other places, and it could be that they don't want a composting toilet in conjunction where it's composting toilet plus it's going to send gray water. Composting toilet has to be.
Compost here, gray water.
Exactly, they're two different entities.
What you're saying is a separation, Rob?
Yeah, there's a separation between two systems. But the gray water, you're still going to have to get acknowledgement from like Rex or somebody to say.
Yeah, we need, we need someone to sign off that this is okay.
Okay.
Running water there with a hose, that, that's not.
That's, you, you guys, I mean.
Yeah, we need, we need.
You need a warning.
We need something, yeah, we need someone with a stamp or something to tell us.
Can you elaborate so I can, can you go forward?
An engineer or, um, you know, some sections that this is allowable under D E P. code or.
Okay.
So we just, we need some, some written documentation showing that this is okay.
Okay.
Well, if you went to an engineer, he would.
That would be the simplest thing, it would be like, here's what I want to do.
And I have talked to two engineers this week. Um, and all of them are busy for the next four months.
Oh, that's not good.
Yeah, so basically I can't get an appointment with any of them in Alstoria County for four months, which takes me into the winter. So I wasn't planning on having this, uh, cabin winterized for the winter. I was just planning on having it be a three-season venture. Um.
Uh, just that the easiest solution, call C W. Safe and talk to probably John Matheson there. And they'll be able to provide you answers as far as what the most strict regulation is. Because the most strict is probably going to be D E P. if anybody's got a regulation. Again, I've seen it. I don't know what was committed.
Yeah. That's how it would be okay.
But I've seen it in several buildings.
Right, I mean, there are several buildings right now in Shandaken who are doing this. I'm not going to name names because that's not my business, but they're.
I don't think we're questioning that, we're just questioning the water right now.
Right, so the water, um, coming from my house is potable, um, from my well. And there's like a hundred feet between my house and this little cabin. So the easiest way to get the hose to the shower head is just to put the hose on my outdoor spigot and attach it to the on-demand water. I don't really see a problem with that, other than, um, if somebody wants to sign off on that, that's great. You just have to.
I think that's what I was saying here. I would speak to Rob and get the phone with the gentleman.
As far as the water supply, yeah, the hose is not going to be rated well enough for not allowing bacteria to develop in that hose line.
Right, there should be a pipe underground.
I mean, it's funny, it's probably the same water, even if it's a direct line.
Even if you have a pipe underground, it's going to be the same water.
Wendy, Wendy, if you were a hotel, if, if you were a hotel, for example, this would be considered a public water supply.
Right.
Your distance from your septic to your well almost doubles the requirement. It would have to be U V. treated, that are very, and they're very expensive treatment systems.
Okay.
So that's what, and this is a commercial enterprise that you're embarking on here. So, but it's a, you're going about it kind of a different way. You can't just, you know, you can't just sign off on that without the documentation showing that this is okay.
Okay. So I talked to.
Yes, he could, Rob, get the phone number of the gentleman, he knows. We, we don't even know the gentleman.
Okay.
He's going to speak to Donna. Donna?
Donna?
Donna, hi.
Okay, so thank you very much for letting me speak. And we'll talk to Donna and thank you very much for your invitation.
I'm sorry to hold you up too long.
That's all right, you know, I'm prepared to do this next year if that's what it takes. Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, uh, Peter, who's Appleson.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, guys. Nice to see you all gathered. Um, so I think you guys, you, you got the drawings, the sort of revised drawings. We, we're making an application for specialty permit, permit a, I, forgive me, because I always get the term next up, but guest house, I guess, right? We have.
Guest house, there's no kitchen.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so.
We approve the subdivision. They want, they want a, they want to go ahead with the construction now.
So please pepper us with questions, because I'm not sure what else we might need us to tell you.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, what the, what's the lot size?
Uh, I think it's about eight point four.
It says fourteen point nine feet.
Seven, oh, seven point eight.
Do you know the, um, sorry, I'm just looking for a larger drawing on here, just to get a sense of setbacks. I'm sure you're like a mile away from your property line, but you're going to, you're going to come up this. Yeah, we did this up, we did this up. They want to go ahead with the construction now.
So we need to see where.
Yeah, I mean, I know this is, you know, the blow up for the.
Yep. You need to show the next closest property.
Yeah, because they, they, they referenced the minimum setbacks.
On there.
Um, but I still, I don't know where they are. I know it's a large lot, I'm sure you're a very.
It says Miller Road.
Are that the paper?
Yes.
Is this the Miller Road?
Yeah.
No, that's the.
Yeah, we did the subdivision, they were going to, they were downsizing, they want their kids to be able to visit them.
I don't think we have that, that's actually, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sort of surprised it's not showing.
Yeah, this is more of a septic.
Yeah.
Got it. More, more information in some respect, yeah. Yeah, more than we need in some respects. Uh, we're going to see if it's on.
Ah, there you go.
All right, well, this will take a little longer. Between earlier, um, iteration, but, so this is the lower section that's already developed. This is the upper section. And that house is already developed out there. And that house is right there, in that big blank spot.
Actually, the house is on the center of the property.
It's like that.
That's, that's this one.
So that's the prime, that's the main house.
Why do you have a house that's...
There is no house there.
There's no house. And that's below, below new lot, it's off the page.
That's what you can see on this little diagram, so that's actually the interesting house now.
We didn't have to, we didn't know that in a building, a little house without getting a permit for the main.
Yeah, because it's an accessory, yeah. Sorry about the confusion on that.
So what we're saying is that you wanna do now, use two houses.
Yeah, it was, that was a subdivision application. We just were discussing that you can't, we can't create an unbuiltable lot.
Well, no, not just that, we wanted to put a little kitchen.
I have prints that we drew up, they're just not...
So that's a little kitchen.
I'm about two weeks away, but I don't think that affects us.
What they wanna do is put in the smaller accessory dwelling first, and then the main house later.
Oh, first, right, and we said that we could do that.
I can't find an allowance.
But we're, we basically, I mean, we basically, we heard that. We under, like, after digesting it for a while, we kind of understand it. And so now we have a new plan, we've basically decided, okay, we're just gonna go with the whole, the whole team ahead.
The whole project.
With the whole project.
Oh, so you wanna put two houses.
Yeah, they want the permit, they wanna go, they're ready to go.
Yeah, we're, we're ready to, we've been like collecting little bits and pieces.
So I'm a little confused, can I sum this up? You wanna put two houses on this lot?
We want a teeny little house that has a little kitchen, and then we want the main house that is like the house.
And you're doing both at the same time.
So you're, they're essentially applying for a special permit for an accessory dwelling. Because they don't need us for...
Of course they don't need us for the main house.
So we don't, all right, so this is the main house, yes?
Yes.
All right, so that's gonna be, let's, let's say, that's building department.
Yes.
Show that, your setbacks.
That's a done deal.
So we're not looking at that at all.
Exactly.
Donna will tell you, you can, you can't put it there. We're looking at this guy.
The one-bedroom cottage.
The one-bedroom cottage.
Do you have the drawings for the cottage itself, or is that appropriate?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you've got, we've got the well, the well setback.
Yeah, it's like a, it's a little...
Yeah, we only need, our side yard there is fifty feet, I see fifty feet right there, so that's fine.
How many stories is the cottage?
I mean, what? It's one-story with a...
Do you have drawings of it? He has, he has drawings of it. They have drawings of it. I'm just upset, it's fine, I hear you asking.
So... I think there's more, two-bedroom, I'd like, under the...
I want, move that, yeah. Say it about it, they did it first, but they did that. Now is all I needed to say, thank you, I'm good.
So this is gonna be occupied by their children, if I remember correctly? Yeah.
Yes.
This is for your children. Children. How could you forget that?
You guys, the septic's all designed, I mean, this is...
That's the DEP, the DEC, the...
What is the zoning area to that R...
Five.
Five.
It is three?
It's R three. It says R three.
R three, yeah, it's R three.
And we got the verbal approval from, who is it, from the...
Right, we have to make a little alteration to the, when we started talking about moving the house up here, we had to make an alteration to the plan, the lines for the septic.
Right.
But we've gotten a verbal approval.
So we got, yeah, and that's opposed.
About, yeah.
That's mine, that's mine.
Do you recall when we did Hudler's?
Yeah.
Hudler had a similar situation. They wanted to put a second house on a lot for their child.
Well, they, but we can do this.
You can do that.
Yeah, this is enough.
And I'm just bringing upon, sorry. And, and what we found out and what we decided was, yes, it can be done. But we always made a suggestion that if this is a three-acre lot, meaning a zone, it doesn't have to be surveyed, but just find a line somewhere that if this ever gets sold or this ever gets sold, it's on a three-acre lot.
We're not legally allowed to do something like that.
I don't think we are actually, according to our covenant, we cannot do a subdivision.
Really?
So there's a list of covenants there too.
You have, you have something on, on your deed?
Yeah.
Yes, that was very common years ago.
Yeah, I mean, you know, also all are done with this in a way.
The planning board mandated it years ago.
But yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's in our contract. Like that, we had to go through, we actually, at first meetings, our neighbors were here and stuff to make sure that we weren't conceding.
I mean, I've heard of, can't shoot on covenant.
Yeah.
A covenant on, you shouldn't be able to shoot.
I think we also have no...
No ATDs.
I never heard about something like that.
Let's go through there. Does anyone have any question about the plans?
Oh, sorry.
Let's go through the application and make sure that they've got everything.
It doesn't say anything in the covenants about two houses on one lot, does it?
It does not say anything about that.
Okay.
I think there, there might be a limit of like three or four structures per...
Part of what it was, what it was limited was, was to wear a tarot rose.
Right, because everybody has to pay.
Right, yes.
So that was, that seems good.
Well, that was very common years ago with subdivisions, that there was a list of covenants and they really got involved. That's why I'm asking, because many of them say no two houses on one lot.
I feel surprised that we're R three, actually. That, that means it's the, on that minimum of...
That's the minimum, yes, ma'am.
It's surprising, I would almost expect that up on the mountain where it's more...
Vertical, be careful.
Be careful, it could go to five.
Right, that's what happens. I mean, there, there are properties that have three and five on them.
Really?
Down by the Big Indian, right? And then, big pieces of problems.
All right.
Section door.
Yeah, we do, it's in our files. I got it.
Well, we go paperwork.
To see what my office looks like.
And every year it gets worse and worse.
All right, let's start down with site plan checklist. Number one, title of drawing, and application, person responsible, yes. North arrows, scale and date, yes. Accurate boundaries of property plotted to scale. Far enough away, I don't have an issue with, I don't need the whole survey. Existing water courses, grading and drainage plan, proposed contours, yeah. Location, proposed use and height of all buildings, yes. Two-story.
Yeah, no, it's single-story.
Single-story for both?
Both, yeah.
Both one-story?
It's actually, the, what is it, about thirteen feet?
Thirteen feet?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's one story.
We just have to make sure we make a note of single-story building heights.
Well, there should be a set of plans that they have, they just showed it the same, and that should be included in with the site plan.
Yeah, yeah, fact shows for it.
Yeah, so you guys, we'll, we'll take a set of these.
I think you have. No, we did all...
As part of the application, if there's significant changes from this, you know, that's, this is part of the site plan.
Sure, that makes sense, yeah.
You know, if the thing gets taller, so if you suddenly build a three-story thing and the neighbors say, what happened up there?
Yeah, yeah, now we're not, this is, this is it.
Change your window color, you don't have to come back to us. Unless the neighbors...
Number eight.
Number eight, thank you. Provision for pedestrian access.
Not applicable.
Outdoor storage equipment not applicable. Number ten, construction materials, proposed site improvement, drains, pelvic fences. Yeah, all that stuff's on there. Number eleven, sewage disposal done, method of securing water supply in the location done. Location of fire in other emergency zones, water supply is, there's no hydrants. Fourteen, construction materials of all energy distribution facilities, electrical, gas and solar energy.
I think it's not a Gary, I think it's...
You can take that back, please.
Sorry.
Mr.?
It's not applicable.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
No signage. Sixteen, buffer areas not applicable, outdoor lighting, not applicable. No retail, commercial activity, landscaping plan not applicable. Building elevations in section, we've got that. And other elements integral to the proposed development is considered necessary by the planning board. The big thing is the septic.
Is there, is there going to be a driveway to the number two house?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not gonna fuck that up. Hundred feet to get to my one-story house.
I just wanted to make sure that we did have fire protection too.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So that should get shown on this.
We should, yeah, I think that's...
This was when the, the idea was to build one first and the other, but now they're being built at the same time. You need to show this road.
Extend it from the parking area.
Easy change. So, yeah, just, I think that's the only, the extended.
Wait, you need the driver showing for me.
For the offer.
Got it.
And what is it, a ten percent slope? No, that's not right, fifteen percent for, yeah, ten, ten percent is for ramps.
I'm going as I go.
Wanna do the EAF? Yeah. Do we, do we need to see fifteen percent of the cap for, for, do we need to see? For the, is this for the main house? Is that's the main house?
Yeah, no, no.
And that's gonna be the building department.
Yeah.
And we're really looking down. She's looking at the accessory use. All right, so she's, you're still gonna need that, but we don't, we don't need it, yeah.
We're about two weeks away from a finished thing.
Perfect. This is, I mean, this takes a long way to go through this process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, there are parking standards to go along with two houses, they have, you have to show the parking spot. So I don't know if that's... Which I know, I've not tried.
Yeah, yeah, oh, you're right. They got, they got a parking area there. Yeah, EAF, go ahead Sam, you wanna read it?
Okay. One, does the co-section involve legislative adoption of a blood plan, local ordinance, administrative rule or regulation? No. Does the action require permit approval funding from any government agency? No. Total acreage, eight point four, total acreage physically disturbed?
Less than one.
Less than one.
Less than one, okay. Total acreage property, project site contiguous fourteen point nine seven nine acres. Checkable uses that occur, residential suburb. Is the proposed action a permitted use of the zoning? Yes. Is it consistent with the adoption of a comprehensive plan? Yes. Is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of existing built or natural landscape? Yes. They did note under five feet that special use permit would be required. Seven, is the site proposed action located in or is it adjoining a state listed critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. Are public transportation services available at or near the site? No. Are pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site? No. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? Yes. Will the proposed action connect to an existing public private order supply? No. Project involves development of a drilled well for proposed residence. That well is serving the main building and the cottage.
Correct.
Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? No. Putting a new septic in all right. Twelve, does the project site contain, or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site or district which is listed on the National State Register of Historic Places or has been determined by the Commissioner of New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register? No. Is the project site or any portion it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office? No. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by federal, state or local agency? Says yes. Okay. If, would the proposed action physically alter or encroach any existing wetland or water body? No. Okay, this is, if yes, identify the wetland or water body. So which, which one do you have to answer yes to?
The second one.
The second.
The second one, okay, so then no answer there. Identify the typical habitat types that occur on or likely to be found on the project site. Checkable in plot, forest, suburban, early, mid succession. Does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats settled by the state or federal government that is threatened or in danger? Timber rattlesnake, yes. Is the project located in the hundred-year flood plain? No. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge at different point or non-point sources? Yes. Will the stormwater discharge explode adjacent properties? No. Will stormwater discharges be directed to establish conveyance systems, runoff and storm drains? No. Does proposed action include destruction of other activities that result in impoundment of water or liquids? No. Has the site proposed action or journey property in the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? No. Has the site a proposed action or journey property been the subject of remediation by hazardous waste? No. And certified with their signature.
So we've gone through the short EAF, nobody has any problems with any of the answers they wrote down? Correct?
Correct, correct.
Sounds good, all right.
And they're not, they're not anywhere near the rattlesnake den. I mean, it's way up on the mountain and you're not, you're way down, yeah.
In my twenty-nine years, I've never seen one.
No, no, you're not near the den.
I think we could set a public hearing.
On top of Mount Trent.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, set a public hearing date?
I second.
August tenth?
August tenth, six forty-five. Is that what, do you guys, August tenth, six forty-five?
As long as...
Hopefully yours will be quieter than this one. So hopefully yours, that, well, yours is six forty-five, so you're before the meeting.
Why'd you say that, that doesn't, we're not here.
She doesn't want, you know, before that.
I can say things behind my mouth, nobody will hear it, right?
Public hearings are always...
The way it'll work is just like the subdivision, public hearing, we close it, then we open the meeting and then we can vote on the project, so...
August tenth.
Did you guys see your whole paper with a public rate?
Yes. No, we didn't say you asked. Nobody said.
We got distracted.
I make a motion that we hold a public hearing on the Applesons' application.
Oh, I've already said that.
Oh, okay.
Then we never vote.
Oh, okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Me too. And me too.
Yeah, just ask that you stay here at least, then you can leave before the...
Do you wanna read these?
Then they should...
It's like a whole set.
They should go in the file.
Yeah, yeah.
She wants to keep them, I don't think you...
You want, right?
Do you have any more questions for them, anybody?
Take all the cells. Take all the cells. Ready to do.
Okay, you're all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you for having everything together.
We're working hard.
Yep.
Ah, who's next?
Go home.
Is it that time?
Do you have a report, uh, Vivian, of the county?
Um, no, I, I, I go to the meetings, I, you know, I pay attention, but I, I don't really have time to do a report these days.
Oh, okay.
Um...
There we are, okay. That's it. Done.
I just wanna say something.
Right.
We brought a lot of the subdivisions years ago, and then I'm getting ready to go. I'm long, I'm long-winded.
No, I didn't, you were worse than you were. I didn't know you long-winded.
Okay.
I called you.
We're gonna, we're gonna second timer though.
Yes, for you. Everybody get one of these just to look at. These are the list of covenants.
Yes, I got it.
From subdivisions from years ago, they were required to be re-registered with the county. Just take a look at them, because there's a lot of things that you have to ask when somebody's in a subdivision. Thank you.
Move on. Also, Vivian, if you, if this is too much for you with the county, then we should move to get someone else that's gonna go for it. So we have to have a...
Oh, um, if you could find somebody.
Yeah, we'll see if they could do something.
Yeah.
Thank you for slimming down on that. Feels, feels like a most...
Alright, I make a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Someone make a motion to adjourn.
So...
Good guess.
All's favor.
Hi.
Hi.
So good at leaving?
Yes.
Yes.
I excel at running away.
We all remember.
Oh, it's special, please.
Uh, you wanna come back to work now for your soul?
Oh, yeah. No, I, yeah, yeah, I don't wanna. Okay, yeah, good man.
Because he wants to run.
Oh, me too. Yeah, and, yeah, last one standing.
That would be good.
Thanks.
Um, Bruce says the... I'm gonna do that with the...
Unless you wanna run, if you wanna.
Alright, sorry. Oh, and thank you for not speaking up before we adjourned.
How do we get somebody to go to the county?
Thank you.
It's always been...
Yeah, but it can't be if I'm going down and... I don't think we ever have a time.
What it's always been is, um, something who, who wanted to be on the board, but couldn't make it.
Who's up this year?
I don't think it's, like, John was last year.
Oh. He was reappointed from the other side of the...
Yeah. I don't know.
I don't wanna...
They're saying birds shit, didn't they?
Hi, I just, it's gonna be good luck.
Our, well, next year, this is your John.
John?
Yep. John is your our next year.
John is the end of the year.
He's on the... You're hearing the perfect, and you're not worrying at all.
Hi.
It is.
Good, good, happy. You've got a beautiful flower, imagine you.
Yeah, but the first was thought of with land, and now it's a tiny house. God, it's fun.
I love this.
Plus, you might, again, no subject.
No, we need, we need a...
I could get the old, uh, probably back to... I don't know, I had the box.
It's good. He knows something. Good. Yes, no, yeah.
He's better.
Oh, okay. I mean, it's like...
I know you didn't say anything. I know, you didn't even say anything. But just to get a balance.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't say anything. I got the active walk around the room.
No, I just, just sit over, just sit like there.
Yeah, okay. But nobody jokes, I refuse, I don't have time to say anything, that's my...
Yeah.
Yeah. I will, yeah, sure. Yeah. I did this specifically. Yeah. I got her, it's not like I was... By the name of...
She didn't know.
Oh, yeah. How good. I didn't know, but like, I...
My imagination's a little weak.
Yeah.
They said, "That's a bite."
Yeah.
I mean, she's gonna say that, if further you can stay from the doctor, the healthier you'll be.
Oh, I know. Well, I haven't been there for a year.
I know, and Vivian, they're like, when they say, "How you doing, Doc?"
Right now, I'm worried.
No. I was telling you, you couldn't stop me.
You can.
No, I don't want it.
You're being brave about something.
That's true. Yeah, I'm scared, yeah.
It's actually, thanks, Olivia, thanks for everything.
Oh, it was, it was. Really, like... But I could go on doing myself.
Yeah, it's, it's a hard thing to do. I don't wanna stop them, but, you know, they do have to be attracted.
Oh, I'm worried.
Yeah, they do. I can't refuse, they're happy, because they didn't want to pay the, uh, fees for the town, and I do like going out.
What, the poor applications?
Yeah, for gathering fee, you know, you have to have the, uh, permits, you have to have the fees, like, you have to...
I mean, for the safety test.
Yes, yeah. And I get one, and I come out of the sand, like, and they get mine, they get mine.
Well, they're taking in money, but they don't pay for it.
Yeah, I understand.
They have to pay for that.
Yeah, before we send the people houses, y'all, they go. So they're not really, you know...
That's how it's entitled to be.
Right, I don't know.
I mean, with their first study, yeah, like...
They have a vision to them, one.
Oh, no.
Uh, yeah, people say, "Oh, yeah, I'll show you all the jewelry." No. I've never done it.
Well, now I understand, you know, they have a reason. But they're still not paid.
I don't think so. Jersey does pay money.
Oh.
At last, uh, Stan was, uh, pretty funny, yeah. Uh-huh, that, that's more, sorry, I don't know, that's the thing, basically. Right. Uh-huh. Or something, that is, kind of, that they used to have places, and things, people who was... People, uh, people called, complaining, who's, like, people smoking, they're not actually finding, you know? They're not getting waited on, they're... It's all your friends, what can I say?
Part of all, yeah.
I mean, I know people who have big fuckways and stuff in their home, you know, and, uh, they stopped it. They did it like they had released, eight months. They're confused. There's more happening.
Yeah.
And then, uh, first of all, the issue's about, like, this money. This was not the place to say it. That's not, nothing to do with us. And we can't, uh, even use that. It would be something like a judge would say, "They have to be against that, that was, you know, that kind of thing." Because that had nothing, no, there are... Now, okay, well, you...
Yeah, and then we don't have any, we probably, uh, you know, cause they are, so...
Uh, but it's, it's different. And we really had, uh, you know, come down, that's like the number one habit, all the time. Things like this happen, and that's like with the rabbit.
Yes.
And that desert, if you have a phone call from, yeah, or if I'm like shaking, I'm like, "Oh, gee." Because if you come up and you talk to them, they don't wanna come.
Because you don't really feel for it.
Yeah, I know. And if you come next to those people, because we can't, you know, and they just keep looking at us, and they're like, "We can't do it."
Yeah, I mean, it's a shame that you're gonna be doing night runs, I mean, that's...
Yeah, you're doing it.
Yeah.
And I thought I'd twice come home and work a house.
Oh, on the sixth, twenty-eight?
Yeah.